Ladies and gentlemen, it's 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge to the flag. Well called order this meeting of the Town Council. The first item of business being approval of the minutes of August 19th meeting.
Washington Town Council meeting. From August 19th, 2021, unless anybody has any comments or questions.
The motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is an announcement, specifically a presentation by Studio J A E D on behalf of the school department.
Just for clarification, that's not an announcement, presentation. Announcement is just for any announcements that may need to be made by the council.
Very well.
So just to clarify that, just so, I understood it has to be an announcement and I, we've never voted on an announcement except something was there, we had to put on unanimous consent to vote on it. So, and I know this is time sensitive, but this came to me yesterday and there's an awful lot of material there and I won't listen to anything, but I would appreciate anything like this, it's over a hundred pages long, come to me. Couple of weeks before a town council meeting, instead of one day before a council meeting, because it's hard for me to absorb everything that's in there, okay? And I know this is time sensitive, but I just want to make sure we're not going to violate any ethics by voting on this tonight, which I don't believe we are.
It's not an announcement.
Okay.
That word announcement is on every single agenda.
Right.
And that allows all of you to make an announcement if you need to. That's why we're a presentation.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were okay to vote on it without any problems, that's all.
Yes, to the school committee.
Well, presentation is...
It's on the agenda.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
It says, "Consider, discuss, and vote to approve."
Thank you so much.
Sure.
I think we truly did provide some overkill with the documentation. We certainly didn't have to provide all of that, but we felt we wanted full transparency during this process. And so, I'm just going to proceed and then I will introduce Phil. We know that there are 220 or so children who learn every day down the street, but we sometimes forget that Wilma McMahon is not just a school. It is a town building, the town's most valuable asset and the only site equipped for voting, for town meeting, for town recreational programs, for an emergency shelter. And earlier this year, we received a $50,000 grant, the school department did. If there's something out there that RIDE is offering, I'm going for it. And so, the school building authority did give us the $50,000 to hire an architectural engineering firm to complete a stage one needs assessment, which we'll talk about soon, and a stage two, five to 10-year capital improvement plan package. After consulting with the master price agreement and sending out invitations to several firms, two firms responded with letters of interest and Studio Jade was selected after I contacted several districts who have worked with them in the past, Coventry, Newport, Portsmouth, et cetera. They have been on-site at Wilma McMahon several times already this summer and last week they held an educational advocacy workshop in the library of the school with stakeholders, where teachers and staff were encouraged to share their big dreams, their vision for Wilma McMahon School with him and his team, engineers, interior designers, et cetera, and an educational specialist. Studio Jade has received glowing reviews from my fellow superintendents throughout the state and now I see why. They took the feedback from last week from stakeholders and so respectfully actuated it in some of the documentation in front of you. So if any of you nearly had a myocardial infarction when you saw some of the figures, I'm right there with you. And just know that those figures, those various stages of improvements are aspirational and over a decade or more, beyond just the deferred maintenance components that are pretty immediate. So without further ado, I would like to introduce Studio Jade, the principal architect. Phil is the president and CEO and he has spearheaded the use of building information modeling, which he engaged last night. He had all of the documentation that you see in sort of 3D mode and was performing edits and immodations and all sorts of changes right before our eyes. And so, Phil Conti is an architect, an artist, and a visionary, so he did go beyond and presented you with more than just what we will be submitting to RIDE, which is stage one. He'll discuss that a little bit in more depth. So I ask for your forbearance and your open-mindedness. Forget about the figures and let's give him a welcome, Phil Conti from Studio Jade here in Little Compton. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me here. And let me personally apologize for the wealth of documentation that was submitted yesterday. We're going to go through the critical points, but in many of the municipalities that we work in, they want to see as much information as possible. Some of it is not necessarily relevant, but critical to the submission. So I personally apologize. I am mindful of that going forward. We will have a much larger submission in a stage two and we will certainly give you adequate time to review. So I would like to, if you would not mind, look at the agenda. These are the things that I'd like to discuss and certainly we can talk about more. I do want to discuss the necessity for school construction process with you. Some of you may be familiar with it, but it is critical that we know what points are involved. The activities completed to date, we want to explain a little bit more about what that involved. Of course, the stage one submission, which we are here seeking approval to make, and then the next steps. So the next page in necessity of school construction, the most important thing to keep in mind is that it is required to receive housing aid reimbursement, that we submit a stage one and a stage two, your five-year capital plan. So I do not want you to miss out on reimbursement. So we want to submit a five-year capital plan. Right now, your housing aid is 35%. There are incentives available. You may or may not qualify for them. Some of them are set to expire in the next couple of years. There may be an extension, there may not be, but in any event, we want to be an advocate for you and raise your housing aid reimbursement if possible on any projects that you elect to move forward with. There are two important pieces to this RIDE process. That is stage one, which essentially is the documentation of the needs of the district. We are challenged by the school building authority and RIDE to engage with the school department and understand not only what the facility condition assessment needs are, what are opportunities for capital improvements, what are educational enhancement opportunities. That does not mean that they may move forward and develop into projects, but we are challenged with identifying the needs because the state wants Little Compton to move the ball forward, just like every other district, in teaching and learning into the new century. Stage two is where, as a group, we collaborate to define what are those projects? What are the solutions that you're going to move forward with to address some of the needs? You may elect to address only one of the needs, maybe some other needs that develop, multiple needs, but that is a collaborative process between the school department, the town council, and the community to define what those projects are and then submit that in stage two. The stage one submission is due September 15th. We are prepared with that submission. It is important to know that submission of the stage one does not commit anything or anyone to bond a particular project at a particular time. It simply means that the school department and the town council recognize there are needs, we want to submit those needs for consideration and an invitation to submit a design solution. So in the next page, activities completed to date. We are an architecture and engineering company, so we were able to bring in architects and engineers to review the facility. And Chris, and you all have been good stewards of your building, okay? The building is in good condition. The facility condition assessment we conducted was for a 10-year forecast, okay? So within the next 10 years, we're going to talk about components of the building that would have exceeded their useful life and should be planned to be replaced. But I can tell you from a lot of the buildings that I get to see in the state, this is very well-maintained, very well-kept. We're going to talk a little bit more about the deferred maintenance components. In order to understand the educational adequacy needs, we conducted administration interviews, the educator workshop, which was very valuable to hear from the teachers how the facility may or may not be working for the delivery of curriculum and how that curriculum should be delivered 10, 20 years from now. And then, of course, we conducted a lot of data gathering, looking at some utility bills, existing drawings, et cetera. So the next page, the stage one submission, as I mentioned, we broke this up into three categories. We wanted to define the needs from a deferred maintenance standpoint, okay? What did we see in the building that should be replaced now, five years from now, or six to 10 years from now? But while we're doing that, we're also looking for what we call capital improvement opportunities. Those opportunities would not surface in a deferred maintenance report because if it does not exist, then it cannot be deferred. But while we're there as practicing architects and engineers, there are opportunities for capital improvements that could help the building perform better, provide a space that is better for the students and staff, and we want to capture them and we will talk about them in a little bit more detail. And again, as I mentioned, the programmatic enhancements from the educators and their point of view. What do they need in a facility to teach the way they want to and what would that need look like? So at a very, very high level, next page, you'll see that some categories have associated prices with them. So under deferred maintenance, as I mentioned, that deferred maintenance report stretches 10 years and we identified approximately $2.3 million in deferred maintenance over the next 10 years. Some of those larger numbers that you'll see come from building envelope components, exterior windows, et cetera, that within 10 years will have technically reached the end of their useful life, but we saw no evidence of leaking windows today or other deficiencies. But it's important for us to identify these now in a due diligence effort. Under capital improvements, we identified 4.7 million. Now those are opportunities that we saw over the next 10 years to improve the performance of the building and we're going to talk about them in a little bit more detail. And then $5 million for programmatic enhancements. That is simply a placeholder, a high-level dollar per square foot that we used to address a very high-level concept that we generated after our workshop with the educators. There has been no engineering associated with it, no in-depth design. These are high-level placeholders to just present an order of magnitude of the need.
Is that just a quick question interrupt? Is that figured over 10 years as well?
Yes, yes. And Phil, anyone has a question, please, please ask. So if you would not mind, go to the deferred maintenance donut chart, all right? Now I want you to keep in mind, this is over 10 years. We only need to submit a five-year plan to RIDE and even that five-year plan, only 50% of the work is expected to be completed, but we can talk about the plan in stage two. So let's look at the deferred maintenance chart. You'll see where some of the larger dollars are associated with over the next 10 years and they are building envelope and interior finishes. So for example, interior finishes, over the next 10 years, we would expect that you would paint that entire building, all right? That is $150,000, $175,000. The gym floor should be replaced over the next 10 years, about another $150,000. You have some VCT flooring that is starting to delaminate because there is some moisture issue that we're going to talk about. You start to see how that $750,000 could be spent over the next 10 years improving the interior finishes. The next big category is building envelope, so that's roof, windows, exterior doors, et cetera. Over the next 10 years, a significant number of the windows will be beyond their useful life and should be replaced. A window replacement project there is in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. The roof, within the next 10 years, will be a candidate for at least a roof restoration project at a couple hundred thousand dollars. So you start to see over the next 10 years for building envelope, how you could spend over a half a million dollars. Then, again, the other categories, HVAC, that's not uncommon as equipment starts to wear, electrical and site improvements, et cetera. We have a detailed deferred maintenance report that we've just finished, which gets added to this stage one submission. That would take that document to another 20 pages long. Let's talk about the next one, which is capital improvement over the next 10 years. So what did we see as areas of opportunity? Actually, just a few. All right, let's start with one of the smallest ones here, acoustical ceilings. When we went through the space, the old part of the school, it's absolutely beautiful, well-maintained, a gorgeous space, but the acoustics, much like this room, are very hard and for teaching and learning, that's not the best environment. So we said, geez, we really ought to recommend adding an acoustical ceiling in here and the new lighting that you have in place simply just gets lowered to that level of the ceiling. That for us was a professional recommendation that is value-added. It's not on the deferred maintenance side because it doesn't exist, but should be in place. The next was some roadway and stormwater management improvements. So we recognized some problems and areas for improvement in terms of vehicular circulation on site, and I have an example that we'll show you. And then the last was air conditioning. Portion of the building is not air-conditioned right now. There are high humidity levels, that's what's made us think that the VCT is starting to delaminate a little bit. There are fans running in the school to make sure the corridor floors are not slippery from condensation. All of the projects we are doing going forward, new construction and major renovation is introducing air conditioning into the school. Addressing the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning is pretty much the most important building component that we are addressing right now. So we wanted to recommend a capital improvement need for air conditioning portions of the school that are not air-conditioned at this time. Now that 4.3 million, I know is only a square foot cost right now and it includes a number of items typically associated with this. During stage two, as we explore all of these projects in more detail, the cost estimates get further refined so that you can make an informed decision. The next image you have is just an existing aerial of the school. And... Let's go to the next one that has some markings on it. Now, at very high level, we saw an opportunity for a couple roadway improvements that could possibly be discussed in stage two. One is a pathway between two of the entrances to increase the length of drop-off, to create a more safe site for pickup and drop-off. Another potential could be a loop around the playground area. Perhaps, maybe that's just for buses since students would not be using the playground during pickup or drop-off. Those are high-level concepts that we developed after our assessment. And again, these concepts that you're seeing are not part of the stage one submission. Remember, the stage one submission is just the needs. We are presenting to you our initial thoughts based on what we saw and based on what we think could further be discussed.
So Phil, can I comment on that?
Yes.
So I understand the stage one of this process. So my initial thought, like your initial thought, is I don't want to put a go-kart path around the playground for many reasons. Safety, you know, there's kids on swings here. I don't think you can guarantee there's not going to be anybody in the playground when the buses are there. You have to adjust the walking path.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You had to adjust the walking path when you put it in because there was a memorial tree there. So the walking path actually goes around the tree. So I don't know how far this path is going to go out into the playing field and how that is going to affect how close it is to being in the outfield. So, you know, my background in being and doing stuff like this, that really concerns me. To even see this kind of horrifies me. So I just wanted to get that on the record and I, you know, I understand exactly what you're saying, but I just wanted to tell you that I'm going to turn the page.
No, and that's fine and I, and certainly we can move on. And I appreciate that because that is, this is an example of what we want to do following this submission so that we start to have serious discussions about concepts that we thought that may not be applicable at all because you are bringing a certain level of experience to us as we all start to engage in this collaborative effort to define what the best solution is for that. So I certainly appreciate it. The only other thing I'll make a comment on about this is the courtyard that is currently inaccessible because of maybe two reasons. One, egress in terms of the capacity of that courtyard space, being able to discharge in two remote locations. Right now, it can only discharge in one. And the other that it is not accessible at either floor level. So we saw that as an opportunity that is unused space and could that be combined with anything else? The next slide you have talks about some concepts that we were exploring in the educational workshop and how the delivery of curriculum is different now than it was before. And if you can quickly page through the next couple pages, these are just examples of what new century teaching and learning spaces look like. And unfortunately, you don't have that yet in Little Compton. Doesn't mean we can't find a spot for it, it just doesn't exist yet and the teachers were drawn to spaces like that because it gives them greater flexibility, particularly at the middle school level, to engage with their students in a different way, giving them a little bit more opportunity for learning, not only inside the classroom, but maybe directly outside in a small group setting. You'll see some existing floor plans in your package. We have just finished drawing them over again today for our use. Let's go to the page that has the colored blocks in it. So again, similar to the aerial where these drawings are not engineered, not designed, just some concepts that were quickly developed. We looked at a couple opportunities here. One is their outdoor learning space, that there was a desire to discuss making that a little bit more permanent, as well as using the courtyard space, maybe at the first and second floor level for some spaces that are currently needed, all right? So go back to the word needed. What did we hear a need for in terms of space? We know your enrollment is not increasing, okay? But we do know that student support services are often shared in small rooms and that's not the best way to deliver those services. There is a significant lack of storage throughout the building. The cafeteria is a little bit on the small side. When Jacobs did their assessment back in 2017, they did not conduct a facility condition assessment, although they did recommend some educational adequacy improvements because some of the rooms were undersized. Then we look at the second floor. We did hear there is a shortage of at least one or two classrooms to accommodate a bubble that may be going in throughout the school in the grade level. Well, when we looked at the art room, the art room is oversized. There's an opportunity to grab the additional classroom there. But is there an opportunity to take the media center and open that up into what we're calling a flex studio space, where those two spaces, flex studio one and two, could look like those images that we just showed you, giving the teachers an opportunity maybe for a larger space or maybe two smaller spaces? And immediately outside of that is a small, what I call studio extension space that's adjacent to the media center. So what you're creating now on that second floor at the higher grade level is a very student-centric space for, for exploring those new concepts in teaching and learning. And again, we're just high-level thinking, using underutilized space, which is that courtyard right now. But again, I go back to say this is not part of the stage one. These are some concepts we wanted to quickly get out there so that in stage two, we can have a very deep discussion on the value of all of these projects. The last page I have is the next steps. We are seeking approval this evening from the town council to submit the stage one. That will allow us to proceed into stage two where we can explore these design solutions, engage with the town council and the community on the best projects to put in that five-year capital plan, and then continue with that stage two submission, which is due in February of 2022.
So Phil, can you, I'm not too good with geometry, I guess, or whatever, but the unused courtyard, where is it on here and what are you going to do to it?
Where is the unused courtyard?
Yeah, which one can show me?
Sure. So the unused courtyard. That is the first floor plan on the left and the second floor plan on the right. And if you, the unused courtyard is the area where we have identified new colored spaces. So we are not proposing any changes to the existing building at this time, other than perhaps the second floor art room, which can be reduced. What we're looking is to use that interior courtyard space in its entirety as found space, right? So we're not adding in addition to the outside of the building. We would be infilling the donut hole, basically. You know, one thing that I was able to discuss last night is that I had an image of a scale and that scale represents what I call responsible innovation. We want to be innovative for the teachers and the students in Little Compton, but we also know that we need to do this responsibly and that's a balance. That's a balance between the project size, the project scope, the project cost, and the other side is debt ceilings, debt limits, other plans, maybe other town initiatives. If this project were to move forward and there was to be a bond for any capital improvements, the town may also have needs. There may be strategies for later discussion on combining some of these. Those are all discussions that we want to participate in. I can only tell you that we bring a very open-minded, balanced approach to this, all right? And part of being innovative and responsible would be using that courtyard, right? We've got four... We've got four walls already around us, we've got an underutilized space on the second floor. It's very exciting because it is right next to the media center, which is dated and is not providing the service that the media center specialists and the educators want to give the students of Little Compton. Keeping in mind, your enrollment is not skyrocketing, it is going down. But that doesn't mean that the level of service and the ability for your facility to deliver those services should be compromised, if there's a way to do it that's cost-effective, efficient, et cetera. Last thing I want to say is, we want you to continue to be able to maintain your buildings in the high standard that you already have. So we certainly, we certainly want you to be mindful that in order to do that, requires commitment over the next five to 10 years. I'm certainly happy to answer any other questions I hope to be presenting in front of you more frequently as we approach the February deadline.
Well, I got a lot of.
Go ahead.
Well, I guess my first question is, because of the importance of this and the amount of material that was submitted to us with such short notice, what's the procedure if we're going to write and say, hey, we need an extension? Because we need time for the council to redo this before they can make a vote on such a massive project. I know we're not committing to any money in Stage One, but that's the way these projects evolve. You commit to Stage One, and you commit to Stage Two, and it kind of snowballs. I would, I just want to know, is there a means of asking for an extension to the 15th deadline before we go willingly into this?
Not that I'm aware of, and I have had the opportunity for working in Rhode Island since 2005. So I'm probably telling you the answer you don't want to hear. The answer is no. It is unlikely that you would be given an extension, particularly on a Stage One, where, and I cannot speak for them, but the implied reaction I would receive is, why? You're simply identifying that there is a need in Little Compton. They could say to me, Phil, there's no need there. And the answer is, well, yes, there is a need. So they would expect our submission. Now, you received a technical assistance grant that expires, I believe, the end of this year. So we certainly don't want to see you lose that money as well. And just because we submit Stage One, doesn't mean you have to submit Stage Two. But I certainly don't want to see the process stop, particularly on Stage One, where we're simply identifying the needs. And they have a responsibility. They're going to take that document you have, and they're going to look at it, and they're going to see, has Little Compton demonstrated that there is a need? They have, and I've seen it not happen on any of my projects, but where they not accept the Stage One. And they go back to the district or the school department in town and say, we don't agree with your needs. We don't believe you've proven to us that there is a need. I believe you do have a strong need. And again, it's relatively, I don't want to say minor, but it's targeted. There's deferred maintenance, there is an opportunity for some capital improvements, and we are addressing educational enhancements, which is what they would ask us for.
Well, some of the things, I don't have your property air conditioning. I mean, I'm always fighting with the council president about how cold I want it because I work outside all the time. So I can understand the environment for better HVAC, some of the classroom treatment. There's just some things in there that I would like to discern on my own behalf before I voted on this. What is, what is a wish list that we'd really like to do? What can we not do? What can we draw? I'm just, it's just a mountain of information.
Sure. And what you-
And I understand, we're not committing to the money, but I'm looking, some of the things I'm asking, I'll go right back to the air conditioning. All right? It's 4.7, is that the 4? Or is that the 5? I got confused.
4.7.
4.7 million dollars. Does anybody do an energy analysis to see what the future cost of the electric bill, that impact's going to have on the school budget?
So that's a perfect question, and that is actually a specific requirement in the Stage Two process. The Stage Two process is, and I am willing to work with you as we go through this. It is a much larger document that has specific criteria that we have to look at in terms of energy modeling, in terms of possible incentives. So again, we're not submitting a project, we're not even submitting a cost. What we're saying is, there is a need for indoor air quality, and we would recommend that through heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. And they would probably expect to see that coming. But it doesn't mean that we have looked at with you yet, where's the air conditioning going specifically? Is, how are we, are we combining it with the central plant? Is it a standalone VRF system? One thing that we saw when we did our assessment was that your heating plant is solid and you have ventilation. So adding air conditioning is not as burdensome as what we have seen in other places and in other buildings. That 4.7 is probably very conservative, all right? We will be going through third-party cost estimating and engineering to develop what that final project and cost looks like within the Stage Two process, which is between now and the end of the year.
Again, I'm just uncomfortable. I understand there's no commitment as of yet, but these things tend to take away for their own. You make one commitment, then you're obligated to make the next commitment, whether it's modified or not. I just can't understand how we got such a huge commitment. It'll actually be, I think, larger than the original renovation in overall costs over 10 years, and we get it with 24 hours' notice. I mean, we got a package submitted early, which, I'm sorry, Carol, I didn't mean to get a little aggressive in the beginning, but we got a package submitted to us, and then we find out that the night before last, they had the subcommittee meeting, which was an hour before the school committee meeting, and the school committee, and all of a sudden we get it. So what we're reviewing is not something that was actually submitted by the school committee. It was submitted by the school without the school committee's approval, and then the school's committee's approval came later, I think. I've got kind of a chain of events going on. And it's just, it's just a huge project, and that number really makes me nervous. Without having to be able to study, I mean, I'm sorry, I went off, I didn't mean to, but I didn't.
Don't need to be sorry. It's a reasonable question.
I have a, I have to, I have to agree with Pat on this. You know, the last project came in, we had different engineers and everything. This is the only way we can do it, this is the safest way to do it. Now another engineer comes in and said, no, that's not safe at all. That's totally not safe. We should do it like this. First of all, going around a one-way loop around a playground, in my opinion, is ludicrous. And my father went to school in Little Compton, my brother and I went to Wilbur, my children are, and now I've got grandchildren going to Wilbur. So I've got four generations going to Wilbur. And I've always been proud of the front of the Wilbur school with trees there and the grass. And now you want to make a roadway in front of it? I'm not sure how that's going to work, but I'm against that. I mean, I didn't want to vote on this because it got to me too late. I don't want to commit the town, because I'm representing the town. You're representing the school as you are. I'm representing the town. And when you see numbers of 12 million, and it's only going to cost us 7.8 million. Well, last time this school committee came front of us, it was like 34 million or 35 million, and it's going to be, by the time you get through with the bond and everything, it's going to be $43 million. And I was one person on the council who voted against that. And when the school found out that the rest of the town wasn't going to vote on it, or they didn't think it was going to be approved, somehow that 40 or 34 million got whittled down to 11 million, okay? So this is discrepancy, like Paul says. How much is, this is a wish list? You know, I'd like to have air conditioning in all my houses, okay? But I can't afford that. Can the town, the elderly people in this town afford our taxes going up? We're coming up for a revaluation the end of December, and the way the house value's going up in town, I think a lot of people are going to be surprised when they get the tax bill. And then you're going to pump this on top of my top bit. I'm just, just kind of overwhelmed with this whole thing coming to me so soon without any kind of notification that this was going to come to us. I mean, I kind of feel that we're bound to vote on this to push it forward, but it's not the way I like to do things. Normally, if this wasn't such an important project, and didn't have that timeframe, I'd say no. I'd tell you, no, we're not going to vote on this tonight. We're going to have time to consume this, read it, make thoughts on it, highlight it, and bring questions up. There's a lot of this stuff that I'm seeing that you want to do. Assess deferred maintenance. Okay, so that's like a capital plan, okay? I don't mind putting capital plans to let the town know what it's going to cost us for the next 10 years. But then when you come out, and deferred maintenance, 2.3, capital improvements, 4.7, and programmatic enhancements, that just sounds like, well, the teacher's got a wish list that's 5 million, it's going to cost the town $5 million. So, I mean, and the first thing in the front of this booklet that I read, the student population is 250, and then you've got a graph in the middle of it that says the school population of children there in 2021 is 220. So is it 250 or is it 220? Okay, so there's erroneous material in here already. How much more of it is erroneous?
Let me address the enrollment one. We're waiting until the October 1 dates, and if we are permitted to submit the Stage One, it says in there that we will follow up with the NESDEC report. So the enrollment projections will be accurate for the Stage Two submission, although we do know it's declining. Regarding the path forward, I sincerely appreciate and understand what you're saying, and I completely agree. For example, what started at $65 million in Portsmouth ended up at being $20 million for the submission. What started at 180 million in Newport ended up being 106 at submission. So it is an evolving process that I feel bad you feel this way, because from my experience, I know we have the time to work together to get this where you want to be. The educational enhancement ones, remember, that is my interpretation of our workshop. But if the only thing that comes out of that, that the art room is too big, and we have a chance to reduce that and grab a classroom there, then that is a good thing. If the only thing that comes out of recognizing that we have some site deficiencies may not be a roadway, but maybe some additional signage, or, as I learned, some additional parking that plans to be added, that is a good thing. So I, go ahead.
There was another, in one of the big packages, that there was no anticipation for any more faculty. But then later on, there's a thought of putting two more classrooms in. So who's going to, who's going to take care of those two extra classrooms? If there's no faculty going to be coming forward, who's going to take care of those classrooms?
I sincerely envy that. Chair?
Please.
We have two teachers who worship it. They do not have classrooms. They share a small office. One is 4.4, a college teacher, one is 6.6, a student teacher. They do not have, you know, classrooms to share. They share a small office, and they, their materials are on the court, and they worship it. And so it is, you know, a box case, everyone's hands, but it's not worshiped very well. We have a beautiful oasis, which is, you know, we've all visited, and it's gorgeous heaven. And there's also a courtyard in the neighborhood that is, and that's a space that is abused. What I absolutely would honor and respect all of their work, I can share some of their views, but please know that in many tap and city, Stage One is not brought to the community. And I was told that by a superintendent and our business manager, that the Stage One is, you don't have to bring this to the tap. But it is not my style for, you know, the cultural exclusivity that I raise in full transparency, to spray something on town in September, January, or December. That is not something that I would be part of. Stage Two would likely be shocking, and then it likely wouldn't be that hot. But we wanted to set the stage here and talk about practical aspects of deferred maintenance and also capital improvements, and objectify human, and also tease out some conceptual changes, some 21st century learning improvements. Right now, we've got these single discrete desks for all the children. And we know that's not how we're delivering a lot of our structure. We do have a structure in sort of a workshop model, where we start out with a focus class for the entire class, and then we break out into small groups, and project-based problem-solving activities, and final assessments are sometimes also done in groups, and they submit a plot around the, you know, the textual piece of exam. And so the landscape of education has really changed, and the structure of the building does not quite sync with that. So even since the 11, 12 million dollar project, life has changed exponentially past decades ago. And this, this 18-month, you know, pandemic era has definitely sort of rooted out and highlighted some of the vulnerabilities and weaknesses of our spaces. And so it is a wish list, you know? Some things have to be done, and that's why we're here, and that's why I grabbed my $50,000 grant of technical assistance. Some things have to be done, and they do need to be found in place, that always is a delightful ability to maintain them. And some things would be nice, you know, it would be nice if they happened, you know, some of the air conditioning in the building, those are spaces that everyone sort of gravitates to respect, especially in Beijing, San Diego, children. Those are nice to have. And then the conceptual pieces of building on floors with the trap, well, I also sort of figured out in, you know, a rise in the technical space, and so I knew that was a high conceptual, you know, sort of, regular, also pushing to a problem. And that is that very small bus station there. It is so small that it's dangerous. Kids have to, their parents cost them in the morning, and it's, to use the phrase, it's a couple of families, it's a hardship. So those were just sort of conceptual submissions, not necessarily, Holly last night said, oh wait, you know, around the, around the playground, and Phil, who he said, that was just, that was just an idea. And, you know, it's sort of been focusing on these districts, that there's a lot of space around here, we're not quite, and there are spaces within, that we're not quite using, allowing, and maximizing, and optimizing. So that was about, I'm just forgetting about, you know, I don't live here, I live in Florida, in the airport, and we just, oh, we have a huge junior school in high school, so I know exactly where you're all coming from. And we've got a pinch, you know, we're paying our taxes, and I'm educator, so the pinch is for schooling, and facilities for kids, and education for kids, you know, I don't want a pinch. But I'm not a member of Little Compton, you know, and-
So if I could, it's not the first time I've interrupted you, right?
Yes, no.
So I just want to clear a couple of things up real quickly. We've been through, I've been through a ride several before, when we hardened the actuaries over at the school, after the Modra Stone massacre that happened. That was a $500,000 product, project. And we went through Stage One, Stage Two, Stage Three- And we went through Stage 1, Stage 2, Stage 3. I don't recall going to the council when we were at Stage 1. So I'm not clear, I don't remember. Do you have to go to a town council on Stage 1 to get their vote?
Stage 2, and that's it.
On the back page says, next step, submit Stage 1. School committee, town council approval required. If we don't need to go, why is that in there?
So that, again, yeah, that's our best practice, that we have typically, again, since 2005, been more successful when we have engaged with the town in Stage 1 so that they understand why we're saying what we're saying, and they can be part of the solution. So I apologize for misleading you there with that statement.
So this, no, so we're grease, we're not necessarily necessary, we're just greasing the skids if you get our vote. It's not required. Well, go into the Stage 1 application that you've gone to the council, they've supported it or voted to support it, would you put that in your paperwork when you sent it?
Oh, certainly in the executive summary, we could say. And actually, where that surfaces is actually in Stage 2 as well, in case we want to show documentation. It's most important during Stage 2 that they know that we are talking, right? Because you obviously are a critical part of this, and that's why we want to just engage with you as early as possible with high-level concepts that may be controversial today, but certainly may disappear tomorrow as we start talking about these projects more rigorously.
And the word we used there, obligated, this town is not obligated to anything if the school was to process this through.
Correct.
Stage 1, just whether we vote it up or down, doesn't matter.
We need assessment. Stage 1 is identification.
So I remember now.
I just, you might have, I just want to ask a couple of questions about the process that I'm not too clear on. What did this, for this riots, like, who started it? Was it the school committee, or the superintendent, or the, your office, or where did it come from?
Why? You like realizing that State of Rhode Island, that has school buildings, and you like decades in Rhode Island, there's a majority of the years to do that, you know, on building projects. And why came up with quite a lot of money? Your school districts also have their students and students that are paying that money?
Was that before the pandemic? When all that hit, when they, when they, so before the pandemic, they realized that all these schools were just horrendous, like awful, hamburg on the ground, terrible, and they threw a bunch of money, right? They got a bunch of money together.
So that's where, that's where we got the money?
Yeah, I think that's, that's, I can't remember before pandemic.
It was before.
Okay.
Yes, and just...
It was all over the news, too. It was awful.
And little...
The towns and cities were all there, containing their school buildings. So the state has defined itself where it did that 10 years ago, quality buildings, not now, but just it's the smart thing to do. And so...
How involved did the school committee in the process of identifying the needs of every...
The school committee prefers to be experts, and smoothly knew that I received the $50,000, and they knew that the pandemic interrupted the process. I did receive it. My grant happened there, I asked who ordered to approve. Because of the pandemic, I wanted to focus on kids. And so it, the grant did sunset December 31st of 2022. I submitted a request for approval, and I did receive it, and so it sunset December 31st. Hence the tight knit up. Never could expect that after getting the grant, in two months, we shut down societies and do it. And the last thing on my mind was highly architectural engineering department to help us to stay on course with units of our building.
Sure.
Yes. And so we're tight here, and I understand that the pandemic has affected every sector, including the superintendent's work flow, and so to be...
Well, I guess my initial two thoughts are, I appreciate you're engaging us in this process, considering that we, you know, need to be a part of this, maybe once in a while.
It's a better practice, and we will, and we need your feedback. And that is, that is the, that's where the trust comes in, and that's what we're responsible for, for actuating your vision for the school. It may not sink with school committees or lines, but somewhere in there, I think we know that.
And I guess my second thought is, you know, I look at these numbers on here, deferred maintenance, capital improvement, programmatic enhancements. To me, the deferred maintenance is, you know, a big number that seems like something that might be more important moving forward. The rest of it seems very aspirational overall, things that, you know, you might have thought to do, but I would label it more aspirational versus the deferred maintenance number, from what I've gathered.
Absolutely, and I knew it was aspirational when I was at the days. It is an aspirational document. But why would deferred maintenance and capital improvements, if we can't also maybe do, even if we don't actuate that?
All right, thank you. Very helpful discussion, very helpful presentation, great questions. I've got two questions and one observation. One of the questions has been answered in this latter part of the discussion. First question is, what is being submitted? What is being submitted? And I don't want to debate and, but that's, we are accustomed to having in front of us what it is that we're being asked to approve. I'd like to see what it is that's going to be sent in if we're to endorse it. Second question, I believe you answered. What is the ride stated purpose of town council approval from their perspective? If I understand correctly, there is no ride stated requirement for the council to endorse Phase 1. Is that, is that accurate?
I understand.
Okay. The other observation is, go ahead, sorry, Brian. That's fair. The other observation is, so that they would know we are talking, and that's the one that I think you're hearing a great deal of commentary about. For example, we have a road program that's underway that is starting to take, it's going to start on Maple Avenue, but it's going to start in a number of other places simultaneously. That's the kind of thing that we need to be talking about. This leg of the commons, commonly known as School Street, that's the place that we need to be focusing on for many of the things you're talking about here. So those roadway improvements, the stakeholders included the staff of the school and properly so, but there are stakeholders represented in the town that I would exhort you to think about in Stage 2, that you need to come to us early enough that we can engage those people so that they can have a role in it. Because the last thing you want to do is come forward with a project similar to the way it was brought forward a number of years ago, that is four times what we end up spending, and only because it was indeed aspirational. We need to bring it down to something that we want to put in front of the people. And when you ask the town council for its endorsement, that should be the people speaking, and we don't take lightly the idea that somehow we're the five smartest gentlemen, and a lady and a gentleman, on the planet in order to be able to give that answer. Rather, we go to the people with a public hearing. So my first reaction to this was, we have no time to do that. I guess what you've said to me is, if we, if we choose to avoid the best practice or fail to engage the best practice of giving a council endorsement, this project, I mean, this submittal goes forward. So to me, that is the way that we ought to go. We ought to have the school committee submit this Stage 1 without the council's endorsement, would be my position, and then we would get engaged in this process such that in Stage 2 we can endorse.
How about a motion? Because I don't want to negatively impact it either by taking a vote and then we end up no. I don't want to do that either, because that'll put a negative connotation on the submittal. How about just a motion that the council takes no vote on this and let them submit it? That way, we haven't endorsed it, but we haven't gone against it either.
I would suggest that your motion might be that the council takes no position on this and leave off the fact of let them submit it. I don't think you're saying that. Maybe you are.
No, I'm just, I don't want to, I don't want to prejudice this submittal, but I also don't want to endorse it yet because I, it's huge.
Do we want to place it on file?
So can I, can I ask Phil? Phil, what would you like, what would be the best-case scenario on your writings in the back of this Page 1 that you want us to do? Ben Dorsey, number 14.
My, my, my preference would be an approval by the town council to submit. However, if you feel you need to amend that motion with language, then go ahead and do so. But certainly, as we go into the next several months of engagement, your voices will be heard, and, and of course, we'll seek approval again in February for the actual submission of the Stage 2. So my preference would be an approval to submit that you feel necessary to qualify that, and certainly do so. That's just my opinion.
So...
Well, I mean, if you'd like to comment. The best practices, let's go back to that, that's important. Best practices, do not give this kind of material to the town council 48 hours a day. That's why we're here. And I don't know what happened on the other end of community in surrounding, but that's the best practice. Now, that doesn't mean the council cannot catch up with where you are because you are professionals and you're ahead of the speed. So let them catch up to you. Right now, if they take no vote, that's not a negative impact. But, I mean, this town, that guy working the camera, likes to be involved with these kinds of decisions. So I would, I would suggest that the council respect the citizens' wonderful presentation, very knowledgeable, very sure, very thoughtful. But the council has to answer to the voters.
I think, I think Stage 1, you don't need the council. You don't need them to support it or not support it, you just leave it out if you're Stage 1. I think that's what we did when we did our other projects, but you don't mention it's town council. I know we didn't when we did the party for the entrance. So my motion then would be that we...
Never hold it nice and hard.
Well, we place it on file, we take no action.
We were asked to consider, discuss, and vote. The motion then is to place the matter on file, and the second is to place the matter on file. Is there further discussion?
Thank you for the clarification.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We are much smarter than an hour ago, and we will have our eye on Phase 2, on Stage...
We need to be kept in the loop so that we know what's going on, okay? You can go through the town council president, and it'll go down to us so that we'll know what your proposals are, what's going to happen, not the night before we have a meeting, okay?
Yes.
Are you guys happy that there seems to be a feeling that you're having a move or that there's some, some, I don't know, some kids that can't figure it out? The district was brought to the school meeting last night as well. So we are looking at two votes, you know, this, this, this pandemic, and state everything that's just going on right now. There's no, you want to, 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 and we're not coming to you, which, other reasons, and now others got to, you know, like, some of the kids are celebrating the holidays, and they're calling all the kids that they want, you know, to celebrate the holidays, you know, there was, there was no feeling of change.
And I believe the wording of the motion and the second were with that in perspective. There is no judgment as to its adequacy or its shortfall or any, any of that. The decision was to place it on file, and I think we are now better informed and we are ready to be supported.
Thank you.
Thanks. The next item of business is a series of eight department head reports.
Motion to place all the department heads on file unless anybody has any questions or comments on the reports.
Motion is made and seconded, yes, sir.
Just two quick ones. On the town clerk, the hybrid meetings, for the IT personnel for day-to-day issues over the same daily needs, audio vigilantes in council chambers that prep for hybrid meetings, just give us an update, Carol, where we are on that.
We, supplies for the sound system have almost all been received. It's anticipated that hopefully next week or the week after, we'd be able to start transferring the microphones and the speakers and doing all of that. The sound attenuation panels are supposed to be shipped September 20th. So providing that all happens, beginning of October, we should be refitted here with room sound.
The only other one I have is finance department. And if we don't have our finance guy come to me, so just do usual, that I've noticed. Okay. So I'll just throw this out there on this sheet here, the third bullet says COVID vaccination expense tracking continued for future state and federal reimbursement. I hate to ask dumb questions, but what is that? Just explain that to me.
Mr. Minister?
Yeah, explain that.
The COVID vaccination, actually, there are three types of reimbursements that we did, the town one, we received, which was COVID, the initial one, and there was the vaccination piece, which was only several parts, the dividend, and also locally, and the school. And those vaccinations, we have to, or someone percent, we need to track of all the expenses. And that's with the chief and Joe.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. The next item is old...
You need to go down. Most of the main and second...
To place it on file.
Thank you. The motion is made and seconded to place the department head reports on file. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of old is old business, to update a vote on acceptance of the amendment to Chapter 8 of the Little Compton Town Code to include in that acceptance an effective date, which was previously omitted from the vote taken on August 19. The administrator has a proposal as to the, as to the date.
I was going to say, place it on file, I was going to move it up. Go ahead, if, wouldn't you?
I would have a request that the council would begin January 1st as a date to make this happen. And the rationale is, one, I'm trying to work with the, again, with the, I don't know, works, who actually is in the, there's some things that I have to work with there, you know, of course, to really sign that, at the transport stations, so there's some things we need to address, people, you know.
Can you make sure that the contractors that are currently using the dump as their transfer station for construction debris, can you make sure that there's a way that they're informed so they can make claims?
That's already in place. We have that ready, as soon as I know the dates.
Thank you.
And I just, I think Andrew and I were talking to the same guy, that I basically have a one-man show, two-man show, a handyman. Now they're saying, I can't take my changing window out of somebody's house and I can't take it to the dump anymore. I'm going to have to get a $500 dumpster to throw that window in. What do I do? I think we need to clarify what... You know, I asked that to the department of Works, I asked that question, and I really didn't get an answer. What can a person bring to the dump, a window? I mean, it's, I didn't get an answer. And the question, the question that was asked, sorry, the question that was asked was, the homeowner can throw his truck and take it, but I can't take it out, put it in my truck and take it.
That's a contract.
You can't be a contractor as what you voted. You won't allow contractors to commercially operate jobs and then bring the...
Then bring it.
The homeowner, if he's changing a window, or he has, his handyman just changed that one window for him, can bring that... window for him, can bring that window himself.
Okay, I just think that has to be clarified, because a little, that's all.
That is part of what he's talking about with respect to a one January start, is to understand how a person does what you're suggesting.
I hear, it needs to be clear, needs to be clear what the contractor can bring, a window, a tub of stuff, period, and the homeowner can bring one thing and a tub of stuff, that's it.
You contractor-
But, right, if you don't, if you don't have that-
Contractor cannot, the way you voted it-
I, I don't agree with that, they should be able to bring, if you take a window out of my house, and they, and they take the little bit of debris out of the, the garbage can, they should be able to go.
That's not what you voted.
I, I just asked, we voted, but I'm saying, you know, that, that's what I think a little contractor should be able to do.
But that, but that's the can of worms, that's, that's where, okay, where's the go from one window to two windows to five windows to-
Well, that's a nice-
Oh, pick-up truck.
Pick-up truck, when does, where does it, where does it end, and you can't put a, a weight amount, you can't do anything on it, again, it's-
I'm gonna suggest that on the first, by the first of January, we work out those issues, that's the reason for putting this out there. We may choose to amend the ordinance if necessary, but let's see if we can't find a way to make this work with our-
Is there a motion made to-
Yes. Is there any further discussion?
No, motion to, uh, use the date of January first, twenty twenty-two to amend chapter eight, a Little Compton Town Code.
The motion is made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next is a memo from the administrator offering a timeline for three things, paving Maple Avenue, sorry, a timeline for paving, a letter to be sent to each Maple Avenue resident, and a request to authorize an RFP to be advertised.
Motion to approve, all requests by the town administrator.
Second.
The motion is made and seconded to approve those three, uh, statements. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thanks.
Thank you.
The next is new business, to review the American Recovery Plan Act recommendations, to amend them as you may feel is needed, and to schedule a public hearing. I would propose that public hearing be as early as our next meeting.
Motion to hold a public meeting on the American Recovery Rescue Plan Act at, uh, the next town council meeting.
I'll second.
The motion is made and seconded.
Before the next town council meeting, or just during it?
What's your motion?
Well, generally, yeah, as part of the meeting, we-
Part of the meeting, okay. I'll second that.
So the motion is made and seconded to schedule a public hearing at the next town council meeting on September twenty-third. Are there any additions, revisions, et cetera, that you want to make here, or are you ready to present this to the people?
Question or two, was there, was there any consideration to presenting, um, you know, the solar development plan, for, for finding a way to, to move affordable energy to, can we use this, this money for any, for whatever like that?
And that's not something that they really wish to do, and our infrastructure is one of the biggest things, you know, uh, in supporting, you know, uh, the sub, 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 sub receiving grants, yeah, is the community center, because it's about seniors, it's resources, and, uh, one in the center, so there's some things that would be to be approached, uh, they can be considered like energy, dark server, save money, the long term, I'll check, I'll check, I'll definitely, I think it's working well.
Tony, we're gonna be able to use some of this money to, for the painting the town hall project.
That's what the bullet, the sub bullet-
What, under system?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Any further, any other discussion?
If I may, just very quickly, uh, the, somewhat, the urgency for us to keep this one through these different steps and have a talk is that, they obviously, they want to now, towards the, the, since we made, we have all the common involvement, um, the projects, it's not just us, small, and we also have to submit the first report, our two reports, and indicate what happened, you know, that, uh, you can create a new program, we, we list the projects, we, we, you know, the council's in public, and a public hearing, so it's important for the administrator to be on, to be called.
Motion on table.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is a request from the Little Compton Game Club for a class F-one one-day beverage license.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next is a communication letter from the tax assessor asking the council to correct the typographical error.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Next is a communication received from the TD of, the technical director of the SWCA Environmental Consultants, supplying several documents relating to the South Fork Wind Farm Project, for comment.
Well, this has to do with historical, um, anything historical, submerged landforms or anything like that, so this doesn't really have any impact on us, so I'm gonna make a motion to place this on file.
Motion made and seconded to place on file, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. The next item is a abatement list received from the tax assessor.
As you can see, this is also self-explanatory, I talked to the tax assessor on this, what it was, there was a bill sent out, and the eighteen thousand dollar veterans exemption was included in it, in these people, the buyers of those properties, so they don't, are qualified for the veterans exception, so we have to abate this amount, and then she's gonna rebuild, um, I believe it's a hundred and eighty dollars, to we, for each one of them, so we're actually gonna abate this, or we're actually gonna bring in, uh, two hundred and sixteen dollars after she rebuilds, that's the process she does.
Any questions?
Uh, so, uh, motion to approve, second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next is a letter sent to the administrator regarding a notice of intent for the Sunrise Wind Farm Project, comments to be received by September thirtieth.
This is also an offshore wind farm, it, uh, is probably twenty-five miles off Sakon, and if you can look at the diagram, you see Block Island to the west of it, um, and what they're trying to do is this, uh, transmission line goes, actually goes into, uh, Montauk, so this doesn't relate to us, so I'm gonna make a motion to place this on file.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to place on file, any further discussion?
Yeah, just that putting mechanical devices out in the ocean is not the brightest idea in the book, and they heavily subsidize every country that's done it, uh, so they're not really costing much, I'm all over them for land, don't think it's the water, I don't think it's a great idea.
And the fishermen, I concur with you, because the fishermen feel that once these things are obsolete, they're supposed to be bonded to have the money to take them out of there, but we don't believe that's gonna happen, that they're gonna sink to the bottom, and the guys that use nets to trawl on the bottom are gonna get-
Companies with a player bankruptcy and walk away from it, anyway.
Very good.
And some of them are gonna cost more money for electricity.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The consent file.
Motion to place a consent count on file unless anybody wants to pull anything for discussion.
I do.
I'll, I'll second it, you know, let him go.
Just very, just quickly, I, I see the, the school has this resolution, and that's very, uh, paraphrased, this Little Compton School Committee encouraged all Little Compton school department employees and students are able to do so to profit or seek the COVID-19 vaccine as is made available to them, and I apologize if I don't know this, I should, has the town council ha, ha, have a similar resolution, or passed anything, or said anything for town employees to recommend they get the vaccine?
The answer would be no, off the, right off the beginning.
Appreciate that.
With that discussion then, is there a motion to place, is there any further discussion with respect to the consent file, we have a motion to place it on, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks. The payment of bills, and you should have a, uh, updated copy that includes a series of national grid bills as well.
Yes, motion to pay the bills, second.
Quick question, believe it or not, uh, from my ongoing knowledge here, and my training, CAI Technologies Capital Expenditures, can you tell me what that is?
I don't see what it's called.
CAI Technologies.
G I S.
G I S?
Yes.
Okay, which doesn't mean anything to me, C I doesn't mean anything to me.
It's like, it's simple.
Digitizing of the assessor's max.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, so there's, there's a, there's a little bit of a charge for that, huh? Twenty-five hundred dollars.
That's, they get it more than-
That's the first charge, we awarded them a contract after competitive bidding to, to digitize our charts.
We'll, we'll learn to learning about that also. Thank you. I will, I have plenty of time to do that.
Actually, Denise would be the best person to-
Denise, well now I know.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well, we'll, we'll then close this open session of the town council and also-
Did I just go with the number four? Do that one.
That was, you, you just pulled on the three to talk about-
No, I'm sorry, gotcha, thank you.
Oh. Yep.
Always though, it's always a good point.
We'll close this open session, ask that the camera be removed, and ask that those who are not part of the executive session, which I anticipate lasting only a brief, a brief moment, uh, would, thank you, thank you.